Any additions or deletions to the agenda? Here none, we have approval.
Uh huh.
Secretary, all of us are in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No delegations or presentations. Minutes of April nineteenth. Can you can hear it okay Mike?
Yep.
Okay. Okay. No one's noted any errors or omissions in those meetings, could we have approval?
We'll move.
Deputy Mayor, Secretary. All of us in favor of the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay, C O report.
Okay, so uh planning department. Uh month of April was two development permits. Eighteen Bridge Street, six Moon Street, one was for a fourteen by twenty-four deck and the other was a sixteen by ten accessory building. Though the department was two buildings next issue for the month of April, one was. Sixty-five Bitterland Street, single family brown renovation, and eighteen Bridge Street for the fourteen by twenty-four deck. By the department, no report. And the office of the C E O, the F C M Green Fund Community Building retrofit initiative. So this initiative supports long local governments and local private organizations in retrofitting public buildings, improve energy performance, lower operating costs and maintenance costs in transition to cleaner energy solutions. Over time. The C B R. Funding offered supports all stages of the project development, helping communities of all sizes to significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions while extending their life cycle. C B R can help your municipality achieve the following, improve energy performance and significantly significantly reduce greenhouse gas emissions, create local jobs in your municipality and reduce operating costs that are building quality and greater community use. So as a follow up to the W R E I P implementation that where the M C C Energy Strategies performed for the RIN last year, they have started down the C B R path with energy monitoring and analysis with the municipality Barrington. Bruce McCollough contacted Jeff Sunderland in January to propose that his company make a joint application to the F C M green municipal fund. Yeah, community building retrofit. On behalf of the town District D B. Barrington is well defined community buildings like the arenas, library, rec center, etc. that entered their application. Now the buildings can also be included so long as there's at least one community building. The situation for D B is much less clear cut. And as a primary community building, the arena is physically in the town but the responsibility shared in the dark. This is a subject that would require F C M to be flexible with their normal approach of one application per municipality. But Bruce thinks there is some potential with a joint D B application. And he is willing to approach the F C M on behalf of the municipality to see what they may say. That's what. So so uh. Bruce contacted Jeff and I on Tuesday, May tenth. Because we had agreed that he should discuss with F C M the factors of the results. So he indicated that he had heard back from F C M and pleased to report that we can proceed with individual applications for each municipality which will allow us to take advantage of a twenty-five K grant for the town of D B and another twenty-five K grant for the municipality district. There would still be some additional funds required. The net delay for Barrington was seventeen hundred dollars. So he envisioned something similar for each of the areas of the town. Check low, their eligible costs for Barrington was thirty-eight thousand. Maximum F C N grant was twenty-five, so they had to match some contribution to thirteen thousand. So they bring it down as six thousand they could get from efficiency Nova Scotia. Leaving a net of seven thousand from the municipality of District of Barrington. You can put in meantime, which they put in fifty-three hundred for salary contribution. Uh that's for people staff to help with the study of it's a net cash contribution of seventeen hundred dollars. So many buildings monitoring and analysis grant provides maximum twenty-five thousand to cover up to eighty percent of the eligible costs. So. And there. So in just in general, building monitor and analysis system enables ongoing building energy monitor monitoring that allows for weather normalization and year over year comparisons, benchmarking of buildings to other similar buildings, identifying or implementation of low hanging fruit, energy conservation that measures and ability to track, monitor and report energy performance after energy conservation measures are implemented in the transition of the energy savings, greenhouse gas reductions. I would recommend the council approve an application to make application to the F C M's community building monitoring and analysis grant made by Bruce McCollough of M C C Energy Strategies on behalf of the town. Okay, any questions or comments or? It's clear what we're doing here?
The accuracy.
Yeah, well, lots of accuracy, yes. Yeah. Lots of those, but I guess in the long term, this is something that.
Tom's a whole system that they like if you're talking about the ring, they put in a series of monitors.
I guess basically, yeah, they're under all consumption. Now, we we had to provide them a little bit of data so far, but we clap more. They use this this data to base with the arena, for instance. It's oil and electricity. And they'll see what we can, how much it's being used and see how much by changing two things can can save save money or.
Are we just talking about just the ring itself, curling club is not included or?
No, curling club is a whole facility, a whole facility, right? Yeah, we had some discussion on that because he he wasn't clear on the whole facility, right? Because he uh. Now, the data that he gathered off of Google and everything else, said that it was they were two separate entities. And I had to explain that at one time when we originally built the curling club was a curling club and the arena was a arena. It sits in, it's fallen all under purview of dark and essentially the curling club is a is a tenant of of that space for time that they use it, so.
That there wasn't a similar one available to do with fire hall?
Fire hall is being included. It's not just, it's not just the arena. A fire hall with public works buildings that then I'm not sure if they make do town hall.
Also, it was just a treatment that I thought. Those big big.
Yeah. Yeah, the fire halls, oil, some basement work, all kinds of stuff. Yeah, okay, so we have the recommendation there to move ahead with this, does anybody like to make that motion? Counselor, so yeah, you all second that. Especially in these times, the leader of oil at two fifty or sixty or something like that right now. Going up the ask going up today. Any other discussion? All of us in favor of that recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Yeah, the marketing levy, so the D B Marketing and Promotions Levy Act has been proclaimed. Like a piece of paper says it was on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Yeah, this this here is my website to make sure.
Yeah.
Right, and uh it was actually there. And so basically, the last one says the D B Marketing Promotion Levy Act do come in to force on and not before May tenth, twenty twenty-two. So that's made it plain. So basically, our next steps uh be to repeal our old bylaw and re-activate the bylaws. Do that all in one process, so.
Then that because of the date that's in there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The thing is, basically, the thing is, we pass the bylaws before we actually had authority to pass the bylaws. Because that act gives us the authority to pass a bylaws, right? So, which we thought that that it was all done, Morton said it was all done. And they're not late of the day, and so there there we are, we're just. And and it did have. You know, roll set on April twenty-first, two thousand twenty. Well, that's up. Yeah, we had royal set, and you know, just uh. I don't know what really happened, and I don't think I should get uh gets. The right.
So when, so when is it supposed to start collecting? I I couldn't really hear you.
No, we have to, we have to go through a repealing and then and amending the bylaw first. And then I was, and I, the chair dad got ahold of me on a number of discussions. I said that I would meet with her and talk about communications between the two groups. Yeah, so I was gonna suggest that the chair and C E O and I are in who just have a discussion about what's the next steps are. Yeah.
Yeah.
But it mean on C E O. Yeah, Jeff and I met and talked talked about it and just sort of what the next steps are. Basically, are thinking that probably April first of twenty twenty-three will uh actually know and forces back collecting money. And uh I think Jeff said that we thought maybe in January, but I said, I'd like to have enough time to get the it's gonna take us two months to get the bylaws back and back and forth. And then we have, I think the next step is to um send send it back to all the registration kits. All that to the businesses so they can get themselves registered, so we know who we got. And with the information, when the date is that they start collecting. Right, that way, it's gonna give them a lot of lead time and they'll be able to uh. But they'll they'll be able to do their advertising that they have to do, they say what they need big time to do advertising for rooms and that or rates and stuff, so. Yeah, I think that's probably what I should probably end up having the chair that too for their members, anyway. Yeah. So it he was Jeff, I think, I don't know whether it's tonight or tomorrow, I is you'll be meeting with his counsel and update them there as well, so. Yeah. I know last week Karen, right, had me that had me, they had talked to Jeff on the phone, where this was, but I had heard. So calls back. Any comments on it?
Just as long as there's no back and forth again on the date, it might actually be.
Yeah, there were two or three back and forth, so that's why I should be saying this is gonna be the day. Yeah. I think, you know, he briefed his counsel and said a lot of the feelings are on on the dates, like I said, just through those dates, and but we sort of learned a little bit that we don't want to give industry plenty of time to be able to get registered and you know uh when and how to collect. I think that I'm gonna hear from, say, this fall, I don't know, but the industry's gonna say that's because that's that's the issue. Yeah, well, that's that's easy for them to say, I guess, but uh we we're the ones that have to administer it and. Gotta form a committee. You gotta be a committee forum, that's all gotta be put put into place, so so that we start. When we start and collecting, then we'll know where the money went. Okay. The next item, the salary scales. So as we know, there's discussions in suit between staff and council concerning salaries, especially the public works department in an effort to crack qualified staff. It has been become apparent to me that just throwing a larger percentage increase to public work staff will not fix a problem in the long run. But what would be required would be a complete review of the town's salary scales for all town staff, which includes classification adjustments, especially in the public work department. My recommendation is that the C E O be authorized to conduct an extensive review of the town's salary scales and file a report on the four January thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, council for their review discussion. When was our last one? Not too long ago, no, this last year, yeah, but that was just compared to salary. This is this is gonna drill down and see what classifications. It was during the discussions that we've had, especially public works, we've only got one category category, a classification for certified workers or operators. And they need to have uh. And the thing is. It's only on salary scale, so when you get class one, and we have a class two facility or both facilities are class two operations. So when you get class one, when we want you to go to class two, there's no financial incentive for that person to really go, because it's not going to then increase. And with class two, there is more responsibilities because we've been now take over for for him when he's he's away and things like that, more responsibilities. What towns did you use last time, if you recall? This is a thought that is important tonight, but. I use mostly, I use counties that were uh pretty close to us in population, some of the towns that uh twenty thirteen organizational review used. Made that one or so. Uh both Phil, Trenton, Middleton, I think, and. Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions, emails and questions? It's to do a review, we're not committing just to do a review. Yeah.
Review away.
Huh?
Review away.
Review away.
So I have to do it, we're gonna need a motion or?
Should, should do, it's just, yeah, someone to make that recommendation.
I'll make a motion to make that recommendation.
Deputy Mayor, someone to second. Any further discussion on it? All of us in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Oh. Were you saying something or just?
No, I said aye.
Oh, aye, aye, okay. Aye, aye, okay, motion to say. Okay. Public Works.
Really don't have too much other than basically we're ramping up for for the summer. Getting student parks ready, ready for line painting. Yes, and basically we've had new employees start. I've seen point though, because basically just normal stuff. So other than town hall, all the materials here, track the project. Once there and done, working on this group over here, he's supposed to, supposed to start the project, that's what he's telling us, so. Yeah, unless there's any questions.
Uh something that council hasn't done, it just occurred to me on your mind, saw a new employer. Maybe council can just send a little letter, from council, welcome to the town. Just one fair rap of town council. Yeah. Take two minutes to do. And I'll do it in a while.
Much as you would.
I know, that's why I'm rubbing it right in. But anyway, we could just do a welcome to town, the members of town councils, but yeah, yeah.
Tom, did you want to make a pop with this immediate budget or?
Uh you can, if you want to bring it up now, because when we talk people's capital budget.
So we have budget meetings, we talked, the fire was brought up with the, especially the something on oil for heating. I said, I get a price and heat pumps, see what, say, anyway, I had weird refrigeration in. And they didn't give me a price of heat pumps besides everything. So for the base downstairs, be about twenty-three thousand five hundred point. But the kicker was, there's a program out right now, it's called commercial product rebate application for heat pumps, where you could potentially get eighty percent of that cost back of the insult. So I just did some just some rough math. So on that, did the fifty percent, then we get almost twelve thousand back, sixty percent, we get almost ten thousand back, seventy percent, or sorry, sixty percent, we would only pay ninety-five hundred. Seventy percent, we pay seventy-one twenty-five, and eighty percent, we pay forty-seven fifty plus the electrical costs. So just to give everybody an idea, I've got the application all filled out, Tom reviewed it today. And our our oil costs last year, the fire hall, were seventeen thousand eight hundred and twenty-two dollars eighty-eight cents.
Yeah, that'd be forty thousand this year.
Exactly, yeah. So I just wanted to ask, you want us to pursue this, put the application in and see what comes back? And I personally think it's a no brainer.
Yeah.
I kind of thought so, when I gave me the rebate forms, I was like, wow, so.
If we're lucky, we'll get the eighty percent.
Yeah, exactly, and you told me that is any buildings that run oil only, that is a very good chance to get the eighty percent, so.
I I have, I got a price yesterday, Saturday, from the same person.
Yeah.
For my, I was Z right. So on top of that, like I was there for thirty years and I was I was called guy because I would turn the heat down, because when you're sitting in a room and it's seventy degrees Fahrenheit and you bet you wear a coat on, you don't. There should be some discussion around efficient use of the heat pumps and things of the building, on how those things operate, so.
We talked about that.
Yeah.
Maybe doing the central control for everything.
Yeah.
That's passworded out, so it can't be changed unless you talk to the right person, yeah. I think it's a good idea. The only thing, I guess, do we do we want to add a little bit to the budget, to the council budget? We'll try to take it to a hundred thousand, it already happened there, to renovate the bay downstairs. That's the biggest, the main thing, Tom, I need to know. So downstairs, that'd be the whole bay.
The whole down downstairs.
These heat pumps will service all of that.
Yeah. What we call the apparatus for.
Yeah. Yeah, we did.
So.
You said fifty percent, we had twelve thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Did a hundred thousand, or we tried taking over a hundred thousand, but we'll probably end up pulling something out of the of that list to get the bay renovated downstairs if we do that, so, because they don't have to air condition it in the summer, right? No, that's the thing, like, they can run the furnace twelve twelve months a year. It could have been turned off because it doesn't even service the hot water. And I had, I got it figured out here. So from April first to December thirty-first, costs us eighty, almost eighty-six hundred dollars to run that furnace for no reason.
There's hot water tank in there for that.
And this this one, per uh, per January to end of March, it also has nine three hundred dollars to run that, the hot water heating system.
I think, but council somebody said it's a no brainer, you have to do it. But at the same time, it needs to be some ownership of trying to save heat there.
But that's not likely we don't, sure, that's how we think.
I I priced, I priced my oil up over the weekend, and to fill my oil bill, it's gonna be sixteen hundred odd dollars. I filled it twice, so that'd be thirty-six hundred dollars a year. But this past one, it was fourteen hundred. Yeah. Do you have any idea what it saves roughly, you know, just to?
So those three heat pumps, Curtis said, costs about a hundred fifty dollars a month for them down there, because you wouldn't have to keep them twenty degrees by no means, and these ones are the highest efficiency, legit you heat pump you can buy. And efficiency Nova Scotia has a list of contractors that they use, and he's one of them. They say you're using this one to lose all the heat pumps.
Are you required to get a an energy audit first, or that application?
You submit the application, then they come, so.
They do, yeah.
So take sixty, I understand, because they're so busy right now because of this program.
Yeah, so maybe some overlap between this program and the other one, but if whichever one gets at the work first. Uh well, that's good data, anyway, so.
And maybe that, I thought it was a moot point, but maybe not, I'll ask the stupid question. Are the fluorescents changed to M E Ds or all those little things done?
So they're changed from T twelve, T fives, floor I came, so anything we do now, we install L E D. But we haven't just taken the bulb now for L E D in, so as they burn out, we put L E D in.
Same same, we're doing this building same.
Instead of around T eight thousand dollars. Oh, T eight, the T is, T fives are smaller, so, yes, right, yeah.
I'll replace it some L E Ds.
I replaced about a few of them.
Yeah, well, we uh uh certainly had a capital budget, which is under your business, I don't think of any hesitation we had that worked out. We can make a recommendation, take that capital budget now, and we'll deal with it in fifteen minutes. If someone wants to make a recommendation for that.
Sure, I like recommendations, capital budget, as Ben said, fifteen person, he said in fifteen minutes.
Any other discussion?
Didn't really, didn't really hear what you're doing, are you adding that on to the hundred thousand?
Yeah.
This is, yeah, it's very hard to hear, I hear every little piece of paper and it's very noisy, just to say. Just let you know, it's it's very noisy on on a Zoom with this system.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just have to make sure we don't bump anything while we're talking.
Well, I think a lot of it is is your microphones, I don't know if you can turn those down or not, but uh everything's heard on those microphones, it's quite loud.
I'm the only one that has a mic on, no.
Oh, really?
Yeah, I'm the only one, it may be your fault, yeah. Yeah, I can shut everybody's mic off too. Yeah. Anyway, what they're, yeah, it's a hundred percent cost, twenty-three thousand dollars, potential of getting a grant up eighty percent.
Okay.
So capital budget, yeah. I think it's recommendation twelve thousand. So all those in favor of that motion, they had twelve moving into the capital budget for approval?
Aye.
All right, any days?
Aye.
Will.
Moved, same.
Yeah, that's all I had here, yeah. Yeah, go ahead and picture. Okay.
Like it's a golf shirt.
Uh, it's, it's, it's what they wear when they come over the rest of them. Director of Finance, uh. No report tonight, as we're aware, everybody has got an email that Matthew lost his mother. And the email, just to tell you the day, the services and things, so. Special cost of, we obviously.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ben, I have one more question for Ed, just with your generators. Has there been any problem getting generators, because in the municipality of. Very, they had huge issues with generators being on back order.
Who had to go six months for that one? That, that one, maybe buildings, that's, I ordered a long, long time ago, so just come in the other week, I heard when we started doing their budgets, basically, yeah.
Okay, now, we always say best to last.
Special cost of all, Baxter. Under dangerous or unsettling report. April two thousand twenty-two, fifty-four Warwick Street, I had a complaint from a tenant, lives in the apartment building there. Regarding another tenant going through a garbage. The garbage bin is located on this property, which we consider private property, therefore is considered illegal for someone to go through another person's garbage. The garbage was placed at the curb, instead of being on private property, then it would be illegal to do so. Uh, I had explained this to the complainant, and provided her a copy of the solid waste resource management by law. Twenty twenty dash zero one, this matter was later resolved by myself, with the assistance of Mr. Nickerson from Waste Check. We happen to be going around some of the apartment buildings and housing offices. Fifty-five Sydney Street, I had a complaint from a tenant in this building regarding the landlord removing the old garbage bin and not replacing the old one for the tenants. As the administrator for dangerous on site, I had spoken with the landlord. Who had explained to me that the reason for removing the old bin was that some of the tenants were not separating their garbage. This was causing a lot of rodents being attracted to the area. I explained to the landlord that this building is a six unit building, and there must be equipped storage containers. To be provided to this building tenants. Since my last conversation with the landlord, he has provided extra large commercial garbage cans and common space. That's all I have for hundred dangerous on site.
How did it go with Mr. Nickerson from Waste Check, how did that go?
Uh, he had a lot of problem areas, not only in the town, but the municipality, and it's an ongoing issue, it's black garbage bags all across the province.
Yeah.
So, and they're trying to, provincial, they're trying to come up with another plan, I guess.
Uh, just a question, we brought up properties, well. Fifty-five Sydney Street, um, this isn't necessarily directed for you, but, uh, up until recently, we had a fire ban on, and forced fires to spot some problems. If we notice, uh, folks are burning, or if people contact us about burning, who, who should be the person that's notified?
Fire department.
In the evening? In the evening?
Daytime, I walk, lay a wire leash.
Okay, because our, our friends at fifty-five Sydney Street had a lovely fire going, uh, the other day in the backyard, so. I didn't call anyone, but, uh, there was one.
I can go up and talk with the tenants now.
Yeah. Well, it, it started the rain afterwards, and then the rain put out the fire, but, uh. I think they were just cleaning up some of the stuff in the yard.
There's a season.
Was, wasn't the time for it, not with, uh, you know, the forest fire just being contained in, in Yarmouth, didn't, didn't seem, uh, proper.
Now, the fire department. Does have the authority to deal with it, they, I know they called Bruce a few times, because they didn't. Feel they should address the issue, but they do have. They can be appointed as deputy fire marshal, chief and stuff.
So do you call nine-one-one, or you call the fire?
Call nine-one-one, report fire, and if you follow the, uh. Any of the fire reporting sites on Facebook now, those firefighters, you'll see nine-one-one calls all the time to deal with a illegal worker. They get called all the time across the province. Okay. Any other questions for? Special cost of.
I see the, uh. Forget the civic number across the street from Beehive. Condemned building. Uh, the, and carbon, yeah. See there, looks like they're stripping away a lot of the inside renovations or something.
Yeah.
So it's nice to see that that's a, back to a condition that we settled, so. I didn't, I didn't know they were actually doing it, but I, I. Why, there's a big bin of stuff outside.
There's a new, there's a new partner that we follow in that building.
Sure, that's good to hear.
Yeah, so that's why you'll see, I, I just think the contractor, they are quite slow. Okay. Yeah. But anyway, there's a, yeah, there's a new partner there that wants that building brought up as standard, so they can do, use it. I don't know exactly what the business arrangement is, but partner has a commercial business right there, so. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you'll see, uh, a tiny dumpster there now for drywall and stuff, so. Okay.
Protective service. Protective service report, people, uh. Close circuit TVs, uh, two of the five cameras are installed and working well, the other three cameras are still waiting through the antennas. Uh, under park control, letter went in. Again, that was in the last month's report. But it's just, uh, the letter went out to downtown business regarding the staff taking up parking spots. And the enforcement started second of this month, which is, I believe it's been going well, I don't only have one complaint. And that was from a lady who complained about a warning, about a ticket, so.
I drove by.
Yeah, I get yelled at for that, so.
So they are. Move interview about this.
Yeah. There's not a report for dog control, crossing yards, under safe solid waste management. Uh, Waste Check had been up going around the town of this valley, maybe this month, turning a lot of troubled areas of concern. A lot of people are still not separating the garbage, exceeding amounts of housing units with black garbage bags. Mr. Nickerson informed me that this issue is not just in our area, but in the entire province. And under taxi licenses, the taxi licenses, renewals will be done due for the month bank. That's all I have, any questions?
Just, uh, on CVC last week, Wolfo was debating cams. So there was quite a debate on CBC, it's probably still on the website, from a professor wall or something, cameras and, and that kind of stuff, so you might be interested just in.
Actually, I got a phone call from a lady in Wamuth, Wamuth area, I guess. And they inquired about, uh, taking a look at our cams, to see what we had for our system. They would like to stall, install a couple of cameras for their downtown.
Good.
As an FYI, since our last waste check, the staff have proposed that we eliminate the smaller size bin. And almost everyone that spoke, including me, said, no, we're, we're an ancient population, I can't see an eighty-year-old grandma taking a full-size bin down the curb. And in Yarmouth, I didn't know, but in Yarmouth town, it's illegal for them to leave their bin in front, perhaps, to ask from, even behind that.
Well, by rights and our bylaw, they're supposed to carry them back from the curb after you pick up.
Yeah.
But you drive everywhere, including the municipality, where are they?
King Street is particularly bad. There's, there'll be seven, eight of them along between, uh. The church and Sydney, and they're upside down, it, it looks pretty bad. Yeah, that might be an area someday, I'll have to, just take that back. Yeah. Any other questions for Bruce? Done? We're all good to go. You're good to go. Yeah. Yeah. Correspondents, a letter from the funding complex talking about the overnight parking zones. Uh, which we've had, I've had discussions with them by phone over the winter. In the past, but the only comments I had in regards to the letter. The, the intent with the overnight parking down there was to address more winter issues, was it? I'm just thinking, yeah. Oh, we got two, there were two places, signs, yeah, put up signs.
The winter signs.
Winter signs for no overnight parking, because, right, of that particular area was, was those, you know, two spots or three spots?
Three spots, they started crosswalk down for crosswalk action.
Yeah, so. It was a load, loading zone, but the issue was that, uh. They were overnight parking. That when the truck come in the early morning, the trucks used to come in the early morning. And when they come in the early morning, they couldn't park there, or get parked there, because of those cars. People staying overnight, but, parked there. That's why I'm, yeah, but, but the issue was, so that's why we put it, that it's a loading zone. And. People can still park there, but we can't park overnight, yeah. The comment made to me in the past, just over the winter, not, not too long ago, was, you know, we, we, we create a parking. The comment was, we create a parking for businesses that have one employee. Hence across the road, well, it's a, it's a business that needs to unload at some point in the day. And they can't double park, because that gets enforced by the RCP. Anybody any comments on, is there any? Is there any way to address it, or not to address it, or? No matter what we do, it, it doesn't satisfy.
I meant, thank you, it was on, I'm sure you liked it out there. I will say that Dean has been very good for me to work with, especially with the winter parking ban, overnight, just, uh, during the winter especially. I would like to, if it's okay, tomorrow, go down and talk to nothing painted, and see what days the truck actually does come. Because if we could get that off there Friday night, especially for Dean. Then I think that'd make a big difference, because he gets a lot of people coming Friday and Saturdays. If we shortened it up, Tuesday, if it is Tuesday, Thursday, they're delivers, just shorten up the sign for their, their parking. So that would give Dean a couple of extra days, and I think that he would never hear any of the problem, but. So I had quite a conversation with him, and I'm the one that recommended that he send a load or two pounds to discuss it, so.
Well, I did note in there, too, the, uh, the references is going to go on, everyone's mentioning this, uh. This fall, so. But necessary redeveloping ones of buildings or?
It's, it's gotta be a balance, you know, it can't do, we.
Oh, yeah.
We created loading zone because of the level parking, we created that on loading zone, that fifteen minute, because it is building. So, you know, we've given, so we, but we have to take consideration everybody else that's out, so.
Yeah.
We can, we can narrow up the, yeah, narrow up the times to.
If you're coming to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they're only coming Tuesday, Thursday, and they should be able to propose something.
They should even have the sign amended, just say overnight parking. Mondays, Monday to Tuesdays are Tuesday and Thursdays, and.
I think.
That'd be the main floor, that'd be.
Yeah, so, so if it was Monday to Thursday night or something.
Yeah.
No overnight parking, then it should cover everything. I think, I mean, that's why I want to take pictures, I'm pretty sure there's enough room on the bottom of the sign to state that, versus no overnight parking, you could amend that.
Or add just a little plate.
Bit than that, too, you know.
They used to, years ago, they used to unload the back three years, to the back, by the way, with all that, to the big, big doors, but.
I think that's, this is one person works there.
Well, that's it, too.
That is, and he can't, he can't push that stuff all the way back, so, so it actually stopped, stopped loading trucks back there, too, so.
The issue is, tomorrow, obviously, they don't have an elevator, and that's all up on the upper floor that you have in there, and. Uh, you guys put mattresses and stuff to that door, because that's where you pick them up, that's where you, it's that door. But I mean, you take refrigerators and stuff like that, up, try to get up there, and then have to try to get them downstairs, it makes sense. Yeah. Yeah, if you're a couple of eight, you'll, I have that conversation.
You know, I, I am the deputy traffic, but we saw them, I'm not speaking up on that stuff, so, I'm sure.
Does everybody agree to that, do you think that might be a solution, or those, it gets, it gets frustrating to me, because. I just, you know, I just tell it's gonna be about for everybody down town.
There's a, he's been great, and they had all the vehicles standing out, all the different vehicles, the bus parking and stuff, just so they were closer to the establishment and stuff, so. You know, he always calls, and over the winter, we talk to each other all the time, so, he has been good for me to work with, so.
Both of those businesses are still putting cones up, though, whether it's Dean, or whether it's, uh, the furniture shop across the street. And, uh, I, I think you're always going to run into that problem, so I don't think changing the sign Monday or Thursday is going to make really any difference. It, it's going to be ongoing. I think someone said before, they've been talking about parking since nineteen fifty, so.
It's, uh, it, it just, just today, on my mayor's page, it come up, you know, the, the memory thing. Like, what you did last year, the year, what, two thousand seventeen, where we were long, there were parking wars, I think, I think I'll repost it. And put it back out, and it was nineteen sixty-five, councillor Hazelton said we were fighting with parking nineteen sixty-five, and he told me, give up on it, you're not going to find a solution. Anyway, I think I will repost that. Okay, yeah, so you guys have a conversation with Dean, and see if we can come up with it. Tri-County Women's, uh, yeah, Tri-County Women's Center, there's an open house. Everybody, anybody wants to drop in this Thursday. May nineteenth. Uh. We're welcome to do that. And it just so happens, May the nineteenth, at eight o'clock in the morning, there's an official ribbon cutting, and we do renovate Soul Beach that I have to attend, so. David Soulby will be here. See if you'll invest more money in the community somewhere. Yeah, so they're gonna, yeah, ten days, we're gonna cut a ribbon, invite everybody into the new Soul Beach. Free food for everybody. Well, I'll plan on eating until I get there.
Well, it was a nice addition, changing the door.
So I hadn't been in, I had, it's not for about seventy last month or something.
New showcases and stuff.
Big Tides Health Wellness Festival. Looking to use every green space located in the town. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
June twenty-first.
They haven't got all their green spaces, so. No. What's your, yeah, the reason that it's, that it's come, because this type of, uh. Festival would require a special events license. And under by law. Special events license, anybody that applies for a special events license for the first time. That's a council, and council will approve whether they'll allow this to take the festival. Then it can be renewed every year after that, but initially, it's so that, uh, they have to plead their case to council, and if the council either says no, or. Blessing, and then we can proceed, you know, a license with. I don't believe that he's looking at vendors or anything like that, so, almost like explicit shows and stuff like that.
The speakers at each park can, yeah.
But the boardwalk, you do have the market going Friday and, Friday and Sunday going there. And they have more vendors this year than they have.
Yeah, what are those dates? I didn't look at them, the twenty first to the twenty-sixth, is that in?
That's music.
That's Monday just, or. Monday to Sunday.
Twenty eighth, it's Monday.
Yeah, it's Tuesday to Sunday. And the market goes Friday and Sunday.
On that Friday or Friday.
I don't think there's anything musical.
Yeah, so that has to be explained to me, yeah, well, I need to say, maybe under the. Because this is a new festival. Fire market prompts it, it's not like it's the other ones, so they'll have it, this will, they'll have to work around the fire market, right? I mean, there's nothing there going on Saturday, and they're gonna end up Saturday.
Yeah, I don't think you'll see that crowds at this event, but you never know. So any comments on it?
Well, everything, any event goes on, helps everybody.
This works? Yeah. So, council would agreeable, and you can make a recommendation, yeah, mesh, and then. And at the special council meeting, we made that to the agenda tonight, and pass it later, and then. His plan underway, yeah, I heard from. On this before I went off, right, originally, and he was just thinking what council would think about such a thing, I was just. That he would probably, you know, probably be agreeable with your presentation, so that's why.
That's, that's my, I don't have any information.
Yeah. Yeah, what we could do is take a recommendation to council, we agreed to it there, but at the same time, we would like to have him in. Yeah, have him come, and we've done that with every festival, we're at, just to get a better feel.
Yeah, it might be better if he can in, sit down, ask, ask questions.
Especially, you know, what do you expect for numbers, because, you know, it's a hundred people, five, it's five thousand, you know, just saying, just saying. So you wanna make a recommendation that we ask Mr. Dugall to come to the council meeting? So, sure, yeah, okay. We can deal with it again tonight, so. All those in favor? Aye. Yep, get the mic, sometimes I forget you're there, wait once in a while. Okay, new business. Draft, HR policy earned it off. Okay, so this. I brought this up, I think, at council, and. So I drafted the policy and. We reviewed it. Senior management team meeting, and I guess basically. I didn't read that, we all, policies and guidelines and just to get it to fit ours. And putting that forward as an alternative to the. Other projects that were under that, my fire policy. We had a conversation with all staff, yeah, they're all part of the process. Okay, comments or questions or suggestions or? Everybody's written this through me?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to take it to council for approval.
I'll say, and so there, so does anybody have any comments or questions or? Lots of, lots of pause and lots of people being quiet. I think the biggest difference in this and what we've worked at doing before is that this is optional, it's not a right. It's optional and a privilege to take this program and. As CEO and as the directors, they can, we can all say yes or no, and that's to work for us, right? They have to, they have to earn it, and the thing is, it's more flexible on how they earn, earn it. They get an option of, if it's forty-five minutes that, a day more that they have to work, they get that. Day off every two weeks, then they can say, if you're a morning person, say, well, I'm calling you in forty-five minutes early. Work on forty-five minutes, or even work forty-five minutes later, and there's even a mechanism for those that have an hour lunch. They can take a half an hour and stay and work for half an hour, and then work fifteen minutes, right, so it's flexible and. I think it's gonna work out for people in the, in the long run, for the organization, it's gonna work out better. One of the insurance companies, I dealt with three years, still do a little bit, it's intact insurance, most people have heard of that, they have what they call flex hours.
Yeah, well, this is, yeah.
This is based, I mean, you could, basically, that's what the other people were calling this, was flex hour products. People I knew, including mine, was my sister, would go to work at six in the morning because they don't deal with the public so much. And then they gain Friday off, or they could bank them, but they still had to work with their managers on their company hours and stuff, so, very simple, I see, you know.
Public Works is gonna, we're gonna stick with theirs, our, our trial, it's working very well for us. On Monday to Thursday, it'd be worth nine hours a day, and then Friday, they go four hours, except for four of us, we get, I get every second Friday off, or opens every second Friday off. We alternate, who's here for eight hours, and it's worked really well for us, it's actually better because when we're doing construction, gives us an extra hour on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. A day to work on that stuff, instead of saying eight hours a day and go home, so makes a big difference, so.
You don't foresee any issue between, you have one policy, yeah, was here, now, basically, this one, we discussed, I met the senior management. It wasn't my intent to throw monkey wrench in too much working, corporate work, it was more what. It is more that I wanted this to be inclusive, so if. That started not to work, then the public work department could use this policy as well, right? So basically, you know, it's not. If we were all in the same building, it might cause a little more friction where one's doing one thing, one's doing the other, but where there's separated up there for the most part. I mean, we, yeah, 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 long, long as the work getting done and then.
Well, that's it, you have to monitor the road to see if we're still getting work done, yeah.
Any other, anybody have comments? We got a motion on forward to take it to council for approval. Okay, I'll call, is it, all those in favor, say aye, any names? So Mike, you already knew how we voted on that, because you're a half hour ahead of us, so.
Yeah, that's right. Funny.
Capital budget, so, next, so, last meeting, we, we discussed the capital budget, give you all the items in there, some we're gonna do, some we aren't gonna do, some we have to carry for it, because we're never gonna bill for it. So we just said we'd carry it for tonight, in case we had anything we have to add, or any dreams or wishes by council. Now, we already got one bad, which is twelve thousand dollars.
That's fifty percent.
Fifty percent of the heat pumps. So we can add that to the capital budget, anybody else got any thoughts or comments on it? So, just, the adjustments that, that were basically made were. The, the, the data, public washing, two hundred thousand, that was added at the end, and our discussion. The lock off from Queen Street over Town Hall, so basically, what we've done with that, we put five thousand. In this year's budget, so that we can get some concept done in engineering. Because like, this is simple, I mean, that's a tank, and it's a live tank, and it's not a simple thing, just, you know, and throwing some two by four, two by six, and stacking together.
You gotta build it two by three, two by four, too much.
And on top of that, it was always going to be a council project where we would participate in putting it together too, if, if we can. So, and then, the, the next year, we, we put fifty thousand, and we don't know.
That's, I'm just thinking about ten by twelve, yeah.
I know, you know, when you get.
You made this breakfast.
The thing is, it depends on just a set on, on the solid ground up on top, or whether it's gonna be candlestick or dead over. And that's when the engineering comes into play, right?
That's why you tell, tell me telescopes.
Well, I was, you know, no, I, I was thinking that, but anyway, we do have to do like opposite.
If you can build it so it's a runoff lane for the cloud and the, or somewhere to go.
Well, I was actually thinking, let's solve Davey's parking crisis, let's come straight out over, we create a whole bunch of parking spots up here.
Well, there's parking there.
No, no, I mean, I mean, we're, like, instead of building a, but building a deck, let's bring it all the way over to the edge of the parking lot here, we get a full new layer of parking. And people can walk over and get a good view, bam, we get another dozen and a half parking spots and. We got a couple million jobs.
Change that to a halfway. Anyway, yeah, so it was something we've been debating for a long, long time, but I never imagined we'd be, like, I'm thinking just a pressure treated deck, you're right that. The post and stuff would be a challenge, but we're just thinking a little deck with a couple of big day holes, but we'll go along with that. So, and now the splash park, I know there wasn't any real decision on, on the splash park, but I did get some more information concerning that request. And that request was included in kind, yeah, so basically. The, the decision or the discussion that, that I had with Sharon was that, basically, that, you know. Depending on how much we're giving time, that thirty thousand, we won't be writing a check for thirty thousand, and then it's all, all the thing. Now, I plugged it in, and the other thing was over two years, not thirty thousand a year, it was over two years, thirty thousand, fifteen thousand a year, right? So, now, something else that will be coming through me from the port will be their request. That they sent to the municipality, the town, they requested a hundred, or a hundred thousand from the. Municipality would say approved over four years, and they requested twenty, was it twenty-five or less?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five year, four years, yeah, so it was a hundred fifty, the municipality would say approved, but they may have another option for us, they may involve parking a lot there, so. That's currently leased by a fish plant, so that's just something that we'll come back to this in the next two, three months. So, I mean, right now, in that draft budget, I just put the thirty thousand in there, but. I'm not sure if just put the fifteen, but, I don't know, I mean, until. They start actually ready to do construction, we're not gonna know, and the other thing is, usually when we do these things. We, that we had done for the. Communities that are in, in Carmel, we committed to funds. For so many, so much a year for three or four years. We never got a check. Right, because the condition was that we had to be in construction, you know, actual construction had to go, and then we'd give them, but we have accrued that money, so that money is parked. And so sitting, so we have to pay that, the money's there, and so it's not gonna affect budgets because it's already approved, so. This could almost be somewhat the same effect, but we're not gonna get any, any money and until such time.
Is there statute of limitations on that somewhere if they don't, for so many years?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah, yeah. They're, they're, if they're there, the constructions, they tend to start next spring, yeah, they're in there, they've got nine million dollars in the province. And where their families are part of it, so, yeah. Yeah, any comments on what the numbers Tom's from? No new trucks or anything?
Must be the same thing for the generators, I mean, I want to miss here next year, but it might actually be three years.
Yes.
That's it, because we're gonna bring somebody into the, basically design everything for us, tell us what we need, it probably won't be this year, I cannot see it, so, yeah. Just take the processor, so. You know, Tom's talking about the splash park there, it's not gonna take long, we got fifteen thousand dollars in income for that, just so everybody knows, so. Like, trust over there, put water, solar panels in, turn them into the property ready to be, it's, you're gonna eat it up quick, quick. So I know we're putting thirty thousand in there over two years, but if half or more is gonna be incoming, it's great, so.
Runs a piece of machinery, it's a few hundred dollars an hour.
Yeah, we always put our rates up a lot, for, you know, because of fuel and wages and stuff, so.
So what are they talking about, what do you, because I think I signed a document the other day that had a wrong spot, it's on the Victoria Street side of the playground, don't.
It's in the front with a flower bed and that, or a flower box, you know, a planter box, it's gonna be in that area, that planter box, they've already had a discussion with. Bonnie, and that relocating that, or, you know, so with the splash park. They give, they give a blessing.
Fencing, must be fencing, it has to be, because that's.
And we have to be able to walk the gates or shut them, so we keep people up to.
You guys, the discussion around the, the skateboard park, ongoing, fencing all there. Okay, there's no further discussion, if you wanna make a recommendation, take this council, we can deal with this tonight. Any other one? Yeah, the other one would be, I'm, we're, we're using the fire hall one, that hundred thousand. I would say we turn that hundred thousand into hundred and twelve, I guess, right, and then.
Number six.
Yeah, that's number six. I know, but not rotten, like up there, heat pumps for free. Yeah.
It's good to do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I was looking at my bank account today, I'm on profits. I think that's all the amendments, and. We have it on our special council meeting, but we made, we made some amendments tonight, and we should make a recommendation, take a new capital budget. Yeah, to, to the new special meeting tonight, yeah. So I wanna make that a motion to take the amended capital budget to council, please. I will. Second?
Yeah.
Any discussion, Mike?
Nope, sounds good.
All those in favor, say hi. Okay, that's the last thing on that, is that we get a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second in there, second, all, all those in favor?
Alright.
Alright.
Days, none.